Step on it maybe, three minutes.
Just inhale.
Yeah.
Okay, Council, so we'll come back to our interview for the Chief of Police. And Mr. Wilcox made three patients, okay? So how you been doing this process is give everyone a five minute opening statement. And whatever questions that may come from the Council, I'll speak very answer. Okay, so yeah.
Thank you, first of all, I'd like to thank you for having me here.
Thank you for having me, my name is Boyd Wilcox, I work in Eagleness District. Our life, I came to the Law Enforcement Board for having me. Also, I spent most of my law enforcement career in Eagleness District, early on in the early 90s. I started out as a reserve officer for some of the older people that were in law enforcement. And later on, I started in a program that is being used to have, it was called JTBA, Job Training Partnership Act. I worked at the Long Beach Substation for a year or so. I later became a police officer for the Su Tribe Department of Public Safety. Back then, it was called Public Safety Commission. And basically started my law enforcement career. In 93, January, I was selected to go to Artesia, New Mexico. Went down there for seventeen and a half weeks. Was the first class out of Artesia. They just had moved there from Marana. They sent myself and another officer from Port DeCuyde down there. And spent seventeen and a half weeks there. Midway through, my associate, the other officer, decided to go home. So I was there representing public safety by myself. And I continued on, and I graduated May of 1993. At that point in my career, my Sergeant of our platoon saw a fit that I carried a flag for our platoon. So I represented the public safety by carrying that flag every morning to class. We left the building, I carried it back to wherever we went for training. Posted it, and I did that for seventeen and a half weeks while I was there. And I was taught to be a basic police officer. Anything from escalation of force, deadly force, handcuffing, law, Indian country jurisdiction, basically anything and everything, even law enforcement, efficiency and firearms. Also highway response, responding to calls while a serious incident is taking place, getting there the safest manner possible. And when I graduated, I came back and I returned to Eagleness District, where I later became Sergeant, Lieutenant. And later, in 1995, June, I was selected or promoted to Criminal Investigator under Paul Brooks's administration, Lionel Armus. At that point, I went to meet with Captain Art Hopkins. Lyle brings him back, Stanley Starr comes out, and myself. I spent one year as a criminal investigator in Hydrangeon Reservation. Had learned the 25 CFR, 25 Core of Federal Regulations. And become an investigator. And I basically had a trial period of one year. And at that point, I went and learned how to work cases on the reservation and what you needed to have to complete the case files. And have to know every district, every road, every accessible place where you get into where crime scene was. And after one year, they sent me to Glencoe, Georgia, which is in Brunswick, Georgia, for a basic criminal investigation. I left in May and I returned in July and I graduated. I got my diploma, I came back, and I worked at Hydrangeon Reservation from that point up until around April 2000. Throughout that period of time, the Justice Department sent me to all different types of training, different conferences on how to better do my job. I basically learned how to protect victims' rights and get their cases presented to the US Attorney's Office and get them some justice. And basically, every day you had to learn something new because you dealt with a lot of different cases. I've been to trainings such as crimes against children, medical legal death. And basically, everything has to do with some sort of assault with a weapon, vehicle. And I feel that a lot of that training that I had over the years, up until 2000, it was in law people on the Hydrangeon Reservation, make a lot of friends, knew a lot of law enforcement people. And basically, I feel that I know some people here in the Council personally worked with them in law enforcement. And I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity. And I just would like to continue on because I've been working off and on since then in different areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, Council, is there questions for Mr. Wilcox this time? Oh, the Council wants to talk about a question.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question in regards to your requirements for the job. So you are certified?
Not at this time. This is odd.
Not at this time.
It wasn't.
Not at this time.
Do you have a driver's license?
Excuse me?
Do you have a driver's license?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Council, additional questions, Mr. Wilcox? Councilman Wilcox, but...
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Question for Mr. Wilcox, I know he did it in law enforcement well back. I know today we have a drug problem that's not every community that we have. You select how to go about it or to truly tell them the facts to every community or to give them all this creation of how to go about it. Get these drugs off the road, especially dealers and also the bullying. You know that we have a community that has a problem with that. I don't think we had a meeting with the aldermen, so that's... The consurgents, the drugies, they're afraid it was bad drug that's come around. You met them with the aldermen, children, grandchildren, so how would you control that? Get these curbs, get these drugs off. Drug dealers, bull eagers, you need to pull them in jail or you get them somehow. How to go about it here? Didn't help with the community end of reservation.
In my experience, when I first got to criminal investigations, they started me out on really simple cases, burglary. Not so much really high end, intense cases where a victim needed more experience. In the first year I was there, I collected $25,000 worth of stolen property. And my captain told me that literally to slow down because I was finding and recovering a lot of property. We didn't have room and evidence room anymore. So basically, I feel that burglary probably caused bootlegging. In bootlegging, I was assigned by Chief Gibson to combat, I went to use the word combat word, stop bootlegging in the districts. And basically, what happened was people that were dealing, one of them tried to put a restraining order on me because I had a process that would come over to Criminal Investigations Office trying to serve a restraining order on me for saying I was harassing them. But I arrested them for bootlegging, dealing. And I asked the chief, I said, "Is this possible that this person could put this restraining order on me for doing my job?" So we gave it to our lead counsel and they put a stop to it. But I know Mr. Watkins over there, he's been an investigator, he's had a lot of experience at this. And people kick on you, they get mad at you because you did some justice for people who live on this reservation. And my experience is that when you do your job, people get mad. I hate to say it, but I bust a lot of drug dealers, blame you know as well as I do in Eagleness District. I put a lot of people in jail for dealing drugs. And we had checkpoints, I worked with the local lieutenants to set up bootlegging checkpoints. Different areas like Rocky Ford, Interior Junction, different back roads. And one, for instance, this lady had a Camaro. And she took all the beer out of the case boxes and filled the back end of her Camaro with cans of Budweiser. And we had caught her, the local guys were saying she's been dealing for years. I'm not going to say no names, but we need to get out there and we need to put a stop to it before it gets in and into the community because basically, when we were working these cases back then, we didn't have a bad problem with meth. There were some issues. In 2006, I came back and I worked the eastern side of this reservation. And meth was a bad problem then, and it's gotten worse. But like I said, I worked burglary cases, I worked bootlegging cases. In the end, I think if I remember correctly, I had 76 drug cases I was working on in April 2000. And we picked up some people, we put them in jail over that. And shortly thereafter, I wasn't a criminal investigator anymore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilman, additional questions for Mr. Wilcox? Seeing we're hearing you now, I'm personally on line, Mr. Wilcox, thank you for your patience today. And if you can stand by, we'll come back with this. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Council, so do we want to do the selection now or do we want to wait until we're judges? I think it's directed at Chairman Wilson. Okay, so, okay. So is there, so I guess the best way to do this is that, you know, we've done it in the past. The secretaries could put up their names and have that aligned. And then we'll throw out a circular ballot, Sergeant Harms will run certain type of process. And then I guess the majority, so the majority is, there is four candidates that we have. And other four candidates that they see for the majority is ten. But if one candidate doesn't give the ones ten, I guess we take the top two, that's okay. And then we'll roll like that, so. And then, Councilman Steele? Chairman, how many Councilorips are present or online altogether? Say again, Councilman Steele, sorry. I wanted to know how much Councilorips are in this, and on Zoom, all, you have it? I told them all. Councilman, there's still 15 members all together, five online and ten in person, so. Or is there 16, sorry, 16 all together, so. Can we have someone who didn't count? Okay, so there's 15 actually, so yeah, we got Richard. There's 15 present, how much are online? Five. So there's 20 all together, no, there's 10 in person. And Chairman, there's 15 of us. So you have a white little woman that counted us, there's 15 of us. Chairman, you have seven years, remember Ryan, he said seven years. You got it. Okay, so we got, there's, there's, I'll figure word for word. So there's, there's, I think, there's, there's four online, Richard Bams, four online, and this one's present here. Thank you.
So ten is the majority?
Ten will be the majority.
Chair, I vote for Josh, are we texting Stacy?
Yeah.
Yeah, and one member's online, please text Stacy, so your votes. Then again, so with 19 present, online or in person? We'll pass around, see the ballots, I think you'll get one. Sergeant Harms will come out and pick it up, if those online, please start texting Stacy your votes.
Or ballots.
And the majority is 10. So if one candidate gets 10, we'll vote for it. All right, so there's actually five candidates. Yeah, Council, you are voting for one, this is first up. If five...
Yeah, because the Margo, he signed out. Um, Richard. Unless he thinks that's wrong. I need, I need some ballots.
Is that, are you not sure, will you come in?
Yeah.
I supposed to encourage you last?
What's the two in mouth?
It was the... Yeah, I can do this.
Four, yeah. Four online.
See, I just have here's the list. I don't know what was, but I listened. I'm here for this. I give it that.
Oriana. Tell him, help him. DiMardo wants to, I got it. Are you guys ready?
Okay, Councilor, please. Okay, starting off here, raise your many voices. Elton Young. Raise your many voices. Raise your many voices. Elton Young Senior. Elton Young. Elton Young. Nick Cottier. Elton Young Senior. Nick Cottier. Elton Young Senior. Nick Senior, Nick Cottier. Elton Young. Marvin Madam. Nick Cottier. Nick Cottier. Nick Cottier. Nick Cottier. Lord Book Cup Senior. Elton Young. That's it. Okay, the top ten here, Elton Young Senior, eight, Nick Cottier, seven. Raise your many voices, three. Marvin Madam, one. Lord Book Cup Senior, one. All right, Councilor, so what we'll do is that we'll move on to the the next, the top two. So and then uh from there, uh who gets the majority will be uh the uh chief, so. Um so it's uh circuit and arms who went to him around voting, and then we can vote. And there's twenty members present, so eleven is the 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 uh majority, so.
Chair?
Uh, Councilor? Uh, sorry, uh say that again, your panel. You, you, that top. Uh Councilor, I think it's the top two that we're talking with. Which is uh Mr. Young, it was eight votes, and Mr. Cottier, seven votes.
Thank you.
And please text your votes, members online, reply with you. Stacy, can you show us around now? Stacy.
When the chair said the ten was the majority, whether it was to one or was four, so that was.
Yeah, there's five online. Yeah, and we're uh twenty uh starting from online.
Yep, that's it.
Starting the second round. Elton Young. Elton Young Senior. Elton Young. Elton Young. Nick Cottier. Nick Cottier. Nick Cottier. Elton Young. Elton Young. Nick Cottier. Elton Young. Elton Young. Elton Young. Nick Cottier. Elton Young. Nick Cottier. Nick Cottier. Elton Young. Nick Cottier. Elton Young. That's it. Okay, if you want to, Elton Young Senior, four, and Nick Cottier, eight. A total of twenty now. Thank you, Councilor, for that, thank you, you talked to the RAB's secretary staff. Uh for doing that, uh is Mr. Young on the side? Uh Mr. Young, if you wanna uh briefly ask the Council, uh if you were selected, so uh Councilor, I will have a. Yeah, if you wanna briefly ask the Council, yeah, you're selected, so. No, that raised support, uh basically, the time this panel was long, I did. Um I think the consideration for the votes. Okay. Um thank you, Mr. Young, appreciate it, guys, I need to go. Councilor, where are you?
So who the court takes what's in order, or is that what's going on?
Um, the way that it's right now, we're listening, so. So we can uh push it up to Mr. Young on the contract. And uh do we need to uh this word, um have a backup? Do we need to have a backup in the situation, Councilor? Yeah, be a second, so is that, is that in order? Okay, there's a resolution, uh that's big with parents, or what is that?
Question?
Uh, uh, Councilor?
You said backup, are you an alternate?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay, so now we need to call your right up. So do we need to make a motion to to this, my question?
Yeah, there are the others, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
That's right.
Okay, so the second by, Councilor, let me. Councilor, it's one of their, uh, Councilor. Your point, and Councilor. Okay. Uh, yeah, you already did. Councilor?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanna be clear in regards to the alternate. How far is that important to tell? We do another selection, two years, or whatever the case we need to.
Um, it doesn't say that I would need Councilor, so it's a big question, just something I'd like to clarify now, so. Uh Chairman, Marcus, do you have an idea?
I think, I think they're in, and so um there's their contract stuff. Uh they can make what they all that they take so happen during that time, so.
Uh, Councilor, your point?
My questions for HR, would this be a contract, that I think this would be a contract position, if that was a merit position, so this is a merit position, not a contract? So.
Question?
Uh, but I mean, that's what happened, so. It's all a matter of now.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor.
So I guess uh what that makes sense, Mr. Young, is to uh know that that his position is a merit, I guess, according to the the what the HR director just said. Are you okay with that, Mr. Young? It's not a contract?
Sorry, uh I guess just for my position, I would request a contract, um based on with the last year, at least, he was in a contract, and um in order to make me change that, we're even able to do it within a one-year timeframe, one-time frame. I would like that stability that was maybe both my contract, or my approach is. He's straight.
Uh, Councilor, caution.
He's got an accent, because Mr. Anthony said that his contract was due personally.
Uh, Councilor, sorry, your point?
So the reason why Mr. Anthony got a contract was because he was not qualified candidate at the time of the selection. So that's why Mr. Anthony was on a contract, because he wasn't qualified. Now this, that, this actually is made of a merit position. Because Mr. Young needs the qualifications.
Uh, Councilor, clear?
This check command, that the attorneys are somebody checking this. Well, I get my information from the HR director, so. Yeah, so yeah, so so right now it is uh very important for me to definitely have a drink, but it's like, yeah, I wear. Very, uh, do we do with it? Do we get to write something, so yeah.
Oh, we shall, I think that's all we need to say. Shall we have a point?
Chairman?
Councilor, you're right.
On a merit, the the twelve states, uh, the salary.
Chairman?
Hey, everyone. My name is Michelle Correa, Women's Resource Director for the role as she tried for the red. Um, the discussion was coming in about whether this was a merit or a contract position. When the contract was written for public safety, and there was all law enforcement positions, the salary of the amount of money that was budgeted for salaries for all law enforcement. So that was why I said it was a merit issue. When Mr. Anthony was selected, he wasn't certified at the time. So he was offered a contract and the opportunity to go get his certification through a law enforcement agency. And that was how, that was the, that was pretty much how that went about. So that's my interpretation of it, I'm not a lawyer, but that's pretty much how that went about. If that makes any sense. I guess the negotiation part would be uh with Mr. Young and tribal council, or at the time, the second board or the finance committee. And again, that contract just said law enforcement personnel, and it's budgeted at a set dollar amount.
Okay, uh, Councilor, my last question.
Um, I think that it should be a contract, because the merit process doesn't allow for Council to appoint anybody, first of all. Second of all, he's not going to fall under the salary scale if we negotiate his salary at what he's requesting. And third, there's special conditions that he must apply, or apply himself to, or must apply to him as opposed to being a merit employee. as opposed to being a merit employee, such as being on call. Um, if they need him in the middle of the night, he is expected to be there. Um, he'll be supervising more employees than any other merit pay position that we have besides dean. And, um, well, the main thing is the salary. If we're, he's not going to, he's not going to come to work for thirty-eight thousand a year, that was already stated. And since the last chief was hired through a contract mainly because he wasn't certified, but he was hired at a higher rate of pay, then I think that we should provide the same thing for this appointment. Because he isn't really going through the HR selection process. And I understand that public safety is a six thirty-eight. But we still appointed him, and it is basically a political position. He's not really a merit employee, because he's appointed by the council, not through a selection committee.
Uh, thank you, Councilor, and I, Councilman, Chair Watkins, please.
Uh, for God's sake, I'm sick of it, too, I'm gonna make a motion to, we'll contract for three years, and that, that'd be a good political decision, so. I'll motion.
All right, thank you. Uh, motion second, by Councilman DeBury, uh, any question about that, council? Um, Harry, you're seeing on, um, both, Councilman, sorry, sorry.
He, when the job vacancy stated was up to seventy-four thousand, so he's asking for, for beyond that, um... So, is that what executive board is going to make the decision on, on what he's asking?
Uh, thank you, uh, councilman, so what we'll do, uh, as a board, is that we'll put Mr. Young on this, and then, um, and then bring that to the plans, and make sure that's up to the plans, and then, you know, we... Uh, councilman.
I just have one more question, now, what is his limit? He's not willing to lower what he's asking for, what, what's the next move from there?
Um... Um, then, most likely, we're gonna have to talk about that, because, because, right now, we can't talk about that, so, we have to, go ahead and say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councilman, still.
I don't know if she was talking about the process, or actual amount, but, you know, I think that we put a job vacancy out that pretty much sounds what's expected from the tribe. And, you know, we can't, um, negotiate too long, because currently, we don't have the, I don't know if this is all done. I think, because, because, because contract is up on the line, which is right. And we really don't have, uh, I don't know, would be left in charge, or responsibility, that is, to put someone else in charge until something takes place, but I really don't want to be stuck in a memo too long, so, I think, um, you know, we can't leave a lot of answers or questions unanswered, um. I think we said, uh, Mr., Mr., uh, Corder would be obligated if negotiations fail, I think that needs to be understood. Um, but I don't think the negotiations can take longer than a week, because, like I stated, we don't wanna have our department running without, which is, is, well...
Uh, thank you, Councilman, and, uh, councilman.
Yeah, I need, I need the motion the first time to, uh, for Mr. Young, and, uh, with the alternate of Mr. Corder, Nicholas Corder, but then, um, we get to that, then Mr. Watt can be the motion. So, I don't know which one you're gonna run first, but we should make sure, like Mr. Phil said, is to keep the alternate somewhere in that resolution.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilman, so, 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 for, uh, abolition, uh...
I, uh, I had a comment.
Uh, sorry, councilman, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, when we're up negotiating and, and a contract and all of that, he applied knowing what pay is. I, I don't know why we're gonna negotiate anything, I mean, he applied just like everybody else, knowing what pay is, so why do we even have to negotiate, he accepts or he don't? That's my feeling on it, I, I don't see what, what the hell was about, 'cause when he signed the application and filled it out, he read the, read the notice on pay, so he's well aware of what he was gonna get paid. So, I don't know why we're, even negotiating, he accepts it or he don't.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, so, some of this, uh, with all the councilmen, uh, more of our questions, motion to do the resolution, and then, I know that Councilman Watkins, uh, would do the contract, so we'll do those, because it's not it's not in the resolution, so we'll just, uh, pushing to, uh, approve that, Councilman Watkins, and then, uh, and then, was like that, was that what you're gonna, tell us to act, and then, we'll make sure with the, the question in there, so.
Chair, could I ask one more question, please?
Uh, yeah, uh, uh, secretary, uh, secretary.
Okay, um, also, may I ask you a little more questions, seconded by Billy Swatner there, Tyler Yellowboy, and Wesley Hopkins, to approve the appointment of Chief of Police Alton Young as Chief of Police with the alternate of Nick, Nicholas Corder. And there is a resolution.
Madam Secretary?
Yes.
It may be worthwhile to read the resolution, because it does spell out the process.
Yes, I'm prepared to do that, sir.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Resolution of the Owalus Tribal Council of the Owalus Tribe Incorporated. Resolution of the Owalus Tribal Council of the Owalus Tribe, surrendering Alton Young to serve as Chief of Police within the Owalus Tribe Department of Public Safety, subject to the negotiation approval of terms under employment by parties. Whereas the Owalus Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaw by a referendum on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five. In accordance with section sixteen of the new organization of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five U.S.A. subsection five-one-two-three. And under article three of the Owalus Tribe Constitution, the Owalus Tribal Council is the governing body of the Owalus Tribe. And whereas pursuant to article four, section one, A, the Owalus Tribe Council has the authority to obligate and enforce ordinances governing the conduct of persons on the primary duty reservation and providing for the maintenance of law and order on the primary duty reservation. And whereas pursuant to article four, section one, W, the Owalus Tribe Council has the authority to the backlaws book and promoting the health potential while there are Owalus Tribe members. And whereas the Owalus Tribe Council has its obligation upon their public safety to provide law enforcement services on the primary duty reservation. And whereas by report number seventeen, page thirteen, the Owalus Tribe Council rescinded the Owalus Tribe Public Safety Charter and declared that the Owalus Tribe reassigned responsibility to manage the Department of Public Safety. And whereas at this time, there is a vacancy in the position of Chief of Police within the Department of Public Safety. And whereas the Chief of Police serves as the executive officer of the Department of Public Safety, among other duties. The Chief of Police supervises all law enforcement personnel and is responsible for the management and supervision of the daily operations of the Department of Public Safety. In accordance with all applicable policies, procedures, funding requirements, and laws. And whereas the Chief of Police works under the supervision of the executive committee of the Owalus Tribe and is subject to the oversight of the Law and Order Committee of the Owalus Tribe Council to carry out the mission, philosophy, and purpose of the Department of Public Safety. And whereas having advertised the position of Chief of Police and having considered the application, uh, application of all qualified candidates, the Owalus Tribe Council, in the exercise of its inherent authority as the governing body of the Owalus Tribe, hereby enacts this resolution to select an individual to fill the position, subject to negotiation and approval of terms of employment by parties. And whereas the Owalus Tribe Council also enacts this resolution to select an alternate for the position of Chief of Police. Now, therefore, the result that the Owalus Tribe Council hereby selects Alton Young Senior to serve as Chief of Police with the Owalus Tribe Department of Public Safety, with a start fee of and that part is blank, provided that this hire is subject to the negotiation and approval of terms of employment by parties. And the Owalus Tribe Council hereby delegates authority to the executive committee of the Owalus Tribe to negotiate and approve such terms of employment for and on behalf of the Owalus Tribe with the advice of the Law and Order Committee of the Owalus Tribe Council. And the further result that the Owalus Tribe Council hereby selected Nicholas Corder as an alternate for the position of Chief of Police within the Owalus Tribe Department of Public Safety. Provided that the alternate shall be offered the position of Chief of Police only in the event that the primary person selected for the position declines the position or terms of employment by that or are not been negotiated and approved in the time when the primary person selected for the position. And provided that any hire of the alternate is subject to, and subject to the negotiation approval of all terms of employment by parties. And the Owalus Tribe Council hereby delegates authority to the executive committee of the Owalus Tribe to negotiate and approve such terms of employment for and on behalf of the Owalus Tribe with the advice of the Law and Order Committee of the Owalus Tribe Council, certification.
My, so, the motion was seconded, um, in this, uh, office. Uh, Harry, uh, seconded, uh...
Wesley Hopkins Senior.
Oh.
Ryan Little Thunder.
Oh.
Carl Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Gerald Canaya Junior. Austin Luckman Senior. Henry Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rodney Bray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Swatner.
Yes.
David Quiller.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehoff Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Raddickis Junior.
Yes.
Marco Steel. Craig Dylan.
Yes.
Uh, council, I've asked, I think, before, and what I'm wanting, we can, council, uh, Chairman Watkins, I know you had a motion for, uh, for...
My motion was about, for your contract with Chief of Police, and I don't, I'm not, not go further with it, you know, the book.
What I think, uh, seconded by Councilman Watkins, uh, in discussion on that, council? So, Harry, you're seeing on, and, um, Wayne Sherrill did that by, by hands. Uh, seconded, you were, uh...
Wesley Hopkins Senior.
Oh.
Ryan Little Thunder.
Oh.
Carl Whitehorse. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Gerald Canaya Junior.
Yes.
Austin Luckman Senior.
Oh.
Henry Yellowboy.
Yeah.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rodney Bray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Swatner.
Yes.
David Quiller.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehoff Weston, um, Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Michael Carlos Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Raddickis Junior.
Yes.
Marco Steel.
Oh.
Craig Dylan.
Yes.
Excuse me, this is Ryan, my vote was yes.
Thank you.
Uh, council, I've motioned, thank you, one, one, um, so, thank you, council, uh, so, we'll start with that, and we have a second point tomorrow, uh, Mr. Young. So, if you wanna, uh, come by, and, uh, figure it out, so. Excellent. Um, so, council, we have, uh, here, um, and, uh, so, I would be, uh, break, a little bit fast, uh, I was, you know, break, and we saw, saw their substitute, and, uh, uh, starting in arms, you wanna do a meal, perfect.